It's six o'clock, so I will call the April 28th meeting of the Bassdrop Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Please call the roll.
Debbie Moore?
Here.
Cynthia Meyer?
Here.
Matt Lawson?
Cheryl Lee?
Present.
Greg Sherry?
Here.
Ishmael Harris?
Here.
Pablo Serna?
Here.
Carrie Kahler? And Scott Long won't be joining us today.
Okay. Did you hear from Carrie? Okay. Item number two, citizen comments. Are there any citizens?
No, this time.
There are no citizens here, so it'd be hard to have... Except us. Okay. Item number three, items for individual consideration. Item 3A, consider action to approve meeting minutes from the March 31, 2022 Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting. Then we've all had a chance to read them. Any additions, corrections, deletions? If not?
I have one comment. I don't know if it was at that last one, but I was asking about the wildland urban interface code. Are we going to... And I brought that up, but I may have...
Yes.
Other meeting... Never mind. No comments.
Okay. In that case, motion to approve. Second? Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? As the record show, passed unanimously. Item 3B, consider action to approve Rivercrest Place preliminary plat. That's not easy to say. Being 48.74 acres out of the Jose Manuel Bang survey abstract number five, located at 1001 FM 969 within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of Bassdrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit 8. Ms. Land?
Good evening, everyone. All right. So this preliminary plat is for a subdivision at the corner of 969, 1209, and abutting the Colorado River. It is half in the ETJ and half in Bassdrop County. So it is about 48 acres, 52 residential lots, with 12.2 acres of undeveloped parkland. That is closer towards the river, protect the riverbank there. It is in four residential blocks and will take access off of Doc Bryson Road ultimately onto 969. So here is a picture of that. All right. We have a stubout to 969 here for future right-of-way in compliance with the county's transportation plan, as well as connections to Doc Bryson Road here and here. And as you can see, it's just a series of residential lots. And staff recommends approval.
I did have a question.
Okay.
So on that, if you could zoom in where it stubs out and meets 1209, I mean 12... Yeah, 1209 and 969 at that intersection. It says there's going to be a future sign there?
Yes. So they are dedicating the right-of-way, but they are not proposing to actually construct that segment of road at this time, but we wanted to make sure that there is a sign notifying people that, hey, this is right-of-way. It's not some random parkland or green space.
It's a traffic sign?
Yes, it's a traffic sign.
Oh, okay.
That'll face, you know, towards the development so that people know, hey, this is future right-of-way. Could be a future road connection.
Okay. That's what I was...
So with where it's at, all right, I know it's a good embankment from the river going towards the property, right? But are there... What... Are there taking any extra measures to prevent any type of flooding that might happen?
They are in full compliance with our Drainage Master Plan. They've done their preliminary drainage plan, and they'll follow this plat up with the final drainage plan that prevents them from harming the river or any off-site properties.
My thoughts are just, you know, with the river rising right there and then working its way here, eventually eroding those embankments that happen, so...
Yeah.
So I'm just wondering, you know, if they took some extra measures.
Yeah, and I think that's part of why in... Here we go. This section up against the river, they have backed the actual homes up from the river to allow for floodplain and any movement.
What, 12 acres or so of undeveloped parkland?
Yeah.
That's adjacent to the river?
Yes, that's adjacent to the river.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just another comment there. This is another subdivision that we're not putting any stipulation on fire safety or wildland. So we're... I know I brought it up already, sent the emails out. You know, we had a chance in 2019, I believe, to adopt something, or some aspect of any kind of code that would at least help with vegetation, undergrowth, and maybe even some material, building materials, because you can adopt any part of it, or some of it, or all of it, but we've done nothing as a city, and this is right up against, again, more of areas that would probably need to be thinking about fire mitigation. So just point out to all of us that we're not really... I mean, we have another fire in Bassdrop, and stuff burns. We're not doing anything about it at this level. Just so you know.
Yeah, and the fire chief is evaluating that again.
Yeah.
And I will say this particular property does not have a tree on it.
This one, yeah, they scraped the whole thing.
But excellent...
That back end is full of trees, yeah. That back end that you just pointed out, it's full of trees. At three years, they've been thinking about it, just so you know. It's a long time.
Please make sure everyone's aware that we're concerned about that and hope their consideration comes to an end, and we have a recommendation soon.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Agenda Item 3B.
The motion, is there a second?
A second.
Motion and second. Will you please call the roll?
Cheryl Lee?
Yes.
Ishmael Harris?
Yes.
Debbie Moore?
Yes.
Cynthia Meyer?
Yes.
Pablo Serna?
Yes.
Greg Sherry?
Yes.
As the record show, it passed unanimously. All right. We will now go into a workshop. Item 4A, work session to discuss upcoming Bassdrop Building Block B-3 Code amendments to adopt subdivision standards in the extraterritorial jurisdiction. Ms. Bills?
Good evening. So what I'm here to talk to you all tonight, so in your pocket, I provided the list of different code amendments that the code, when we adopted the B-3 Code, calls for the Development Review Committee, which is the internal committee of staff that... From all the different departments that reviews development plans, to look through the code and, you know, recommend changes. We came to... Had a joint meeting back with City Council and P&amp;Z back in the beginning of 2001 with a list. We've added a few things to that, but we're still working our way through that list. We've been bringing those code changes forward as they... As we're getting them written. Last, we had sign code amendments. We're working on finalizing the draft for the wireless transmission facilities that we talked about several months back. And what we've all been working on now is the ETJ subdivision standard. So just kind of backgrounds on subdivision authority, just as a refresher, the authorities granted to the city through the Texas Local Government Code that allows cities to regulate The state just provides some basic, you've got to have a plat, and has a couple of exemptions if you're over a certain size. After that, any rules you have on plating, like when the roads need to get built, how big the lot's going to be, all those come from your local standard. So if you don't have any local standards, you have very little development controls or, you know, ways to control orderly development in the city or the county. So we have to actually adopt those standards. They can apply in the city limits, as well as the extraterritorial jurisdiction. How they apply in the extraterritorial jurisdiction is determined for each city with a 1445 agreement. It was a House bill back in the 90s, House Bill 1445, that requires the city and a county to determine who's reviewing what. So you both can't make... What was happening prior to the House bill was sometimes you're having to submit to the city and the county at the same time, and then everyone had to duke it out on whose rules you were following. So they said, pick a way to do it. Either you both can review it together, one of you reviews it. So with our 1445, we've defined those areas and how that review is taking place in the ETJ. And the last thing that's always important to note on subdivision regulations versus zoning regulations, subdivisions are what we call ministerial regulations that if a developer meets all the rules as they are written in the code, the city has to approve the plat. So we don't have subjective, we don't like the subdivision, we, you know, in this case, we think the lot sizes are too small. If they meet the regulations, the plat has to be approved. If they're not meeting them and there's some subjectivity in it, then it can be denied. So if they're asking for a variance from the rules, those can be denied. But if it meets all the rules as written, it has to be approved.
They should be in capital letters all over the place, that if they meet the rules, they have to be approved.
And where that... The one exception, kind of when you kind of think of that is residential replats. The state actually requires that process to come back as a public hearing to the Planning and Zoning Commission, because you're changing the original plat. So then in that case, the neighbors get notified. P&amp;Z has a little bit more discretion, but if it's a brand-new subdivision, no discretion. So going a little bit more into detail on all of our different jurisdictions, on this map, the white area in the middle is our city limits. The dark green area around is a one-mile buffer, which is our one-mile statutory ETJ. So for the city the size of Bassdrop, we automatically get a one-mile planning territory. If you're smaller, like City of Smithville, they get a half-mile. And as you get bigger, those buffers get bigger, where we have to hit 25,000 before it gets bigger again. But then you also have what we... It's a little bit unique to Bassdrop, is a voluntary ETJ, which are landowners that in the 80s voluntarily opted in to be in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of Bassdrop. And that's because City of Austin is now actually in Bassdrop, so you can automatically be absorbed into their ETJ in some spots if you're not already in ours. So that 145 square mile area in our 1445, we define as Area A and Area B. So the middle green is Area A, and that's the area that the city's subdivision regulations are good in. And Area B is where the county's regulations are the ones that are followed. So anything in the light green area or dark green area comes to us for subdivision review. All the lightest green area goes to the county.
Can you give us an idea of landmarks, or so we can see what areas it affects?
So the very... I know the very last property on 71, as you go towards the county, is that gas station with the McDonald's and the Shell Station. That's the very last property on 71, if... Just kind of give you an extent of how far out that is. Oh, no. I'm trying to think where...
Cedar Creek High School.
Cedar Creek High School is, I want to say yonder-ish there, I think. The new tractor supply is like right outside the ETJ in one of those white areas, so it is hard to like identify, because I'll be driving by and I'll have to get back and look up if they're in our territory or not, so. It's a lot easier on Area A. Area A is a bit more contiguous, so... Which is what we pay attention to. I will say the only caveat to Area B is if someone is requesting a special district, like a municipal utility district, those do actually come back to the city for approval. Any special district, regardless of where it is in the ETJ, comes to the city.
So Jennifer, you said that Austin's ETJ is extended. Will there's overlap ours, or it's going to stop where ours, and we'll just meet?
So they will overlap in the sense of they will actually fill in the holes. So, there we go. So as you get out here, there... We have another map that shows all these little white areas in there. Theirs is, of course, a buffer like ours is, so it's round, but a lot of those little white areas are in their blue ETJ now. So the areas that are already green stay us, but any of those white areas that now fall into their five-mile ETJ are now under City of Austin, whatever regulatory authority they impose. They have... They do kind of the combo method, at least in Travis County, they do... They have a 1445 that they review jointly. They do have a 1445 with Bassdrop County as well, and they have a review process for the ETJ between the county and the Austin's Development Services. So there are several properties out there that are being regulated under Austin's ETJ.
Coming from Louisiana, I think they'd have been in a gunfight at the bayou, somebody, another parish who tried to overlap and take over. It's just part of the state law that county lines don't stop?
Oh, county lines don't stop. Texas is a little unusual, like that none of the boundaries affect each other. So that's one of the biggest misnomers, is that like, oh, I have a Bassdrop address. That's just your postal address. That's the post office you're assigned to. That doesn't necessarily mean what jurisdiction you're in, so... But then you've got, you know, City of Round Rock sits right on the dividing line between Williamson's and Travis County's. Some of Austin is in Williamson County, so, yeah, cities don't follow county lines in Texas.
So would they continue to move eastward, or they'll...
Yeah, as long as City Austin continues to annex further east, what city limits, their ETJ will continue to push out, so...
So what would that do to our ETJ?
It'll stay... It'll stay green unless someone opts, wants to actively get out of our ETJ and into Austin's. Since we were there first, it's ours.
Okay.
Can they get out of... Can they voluntarily come into ours before Austin gets them, like they did in the 80s?
They can, yeah.
And what does that process look like?
They... It's a petition. They petition the city to be annexed into the... Or for us to extend our ETJ, and we just have to be contiguous to the existing ETJ. So any of those holes that are right up against the green, so far, it hasn't seemed to be too much of a problem, a lot of... So far, I mean, but Austin's pretty new into our...
Well, how will the new legislation on annexation affect the creep further in?
Yeah, so most of the annexation for Austin will be voluntary, would be my guess.
Be voluntary, yeah.
They're voluntarily annexing into Austin to get certain incentives or utilities or things of those natures. So... Because I... When they've... They've annexed past 130 now, so... So like Circuit of Americas, that was one of the big things that pushed out their ETJ, because that annexed into the city limit, so you've got a lot.
I met someone sometime back that their... Half their house, they said, was in Bassdrop County, the other half was in Travis County. They wanted to do some work, but there was some disagreement as to who was responsible for that, and they never ended up doing the work, because it was like an argument, if it was Travis County or Bassdrop County. How are those situations handled?
Typically, it's who has the most percentage of it is who it falls under. So that's what we... That's the agreement we have with Bassdrop County, is if... So like the last development was actually partially in our ETJ, and it was like 51% in our ETJ and 49% in the counties. And they're like, you can take it. You guys have more, you're reviewing it. So... So like McAllister Road, as you go east, that's one that there are properties along there that are half-in, half-out, and whoever has the majority of it gets the authority on it.
Is the homeowner responsible for having someone come out and assess the property to determine that, or how is that determined?
We all have our maps into GIS, so you can look on the property. We usually evaluate it between... On our GIS systems, the county, and we share our data, so it's the same data, so...
Question on... Looks like as you're going up 21 and even on the east side of 95 and then Tahitian, what are the... Is that the county has all of that jurisdiction? Is there any... There seems to be a lot of homes out there.
Out in this area?
Yeah, and up 90, 21, between 21 and 95.
Oh, out here?
Yeah, up by the lake.
Yes.
Further north.
All those?
All that.
Oh, Camp Swift area, the LBA. Yes, so those are all 100% in county jurisdiction. The city doesn't have anything to do with those.
There's no... There's no... I mean, I see we got a big swath of Area A, you said. There's a lot of houses there. I mean, no discussions?
No, not at this point, no. That was a push in the 80s.
Yeah.
And there's not been... And again, that's... I think some of that's also because that's the toad habitat, so there's limited development potential at this point because of that. Plus, you've got Camp Swift, which also has its own reasons to not develop around it as well. Because, yeah, you get up there, and a lot of that's just their area and their buffers as well, so... So for the City of Bassdrop subdivision regulations, they were originally adopted in 1981, was our first subdivision regulation adoption. Over time, there were amendments made. They were made individually when certain circumstances arose, and gradually over that time. That's where we kind of started with the building Bassdrop process, was there were a lot of different sections of the code that didn't work together, the subdivision... Just within the subdivision regulations itself, and then when you applied the zoning regulations on top of them, you had enough contradictions that some things were just not buildable under the regulations as they were adopted. So that was, you know, the reason why we undertook the building Bassdrop process, to wholesale look at all the codes at the same time, to get them all back on the same page, as it were. However, we were developing what we call Unified Development Code. It's a lot harder when you're looking at the B-3 Codes to see, this is a subdivision standard, this is a zoning standard, because the developer doesn't really care, they just want to know how to develop. Where that gets confusing is if you're in the ETJ, because zoning standards don't apply in the ETJ. We can't enforce any kind of zoning, we can't enforce any kind of land use. What we can enforce in the ETJ is lot standards, stormwater standards, road standards, those kind of things, but not... I can't tell you whether or not you can build a house versus a commercial business in the ETJ. All I know is you're developing a lot. So what we're looking to do with these... This update is to provide some more guidance for the ETJ specifically, so it's very clear on what are the regulations that apply in the ETJ versus what applies in the city limits. And one of the things we've talked about is cleaning up and streamlining the exemption process. So this is when you don't have to plat. So you've got a 100-acre lot, you're going to be on well, you already have a street, you're just going to be ranching, you don't need to plat, you know, those kind of things. You have a five-acre lot, and you want to divide it into five one-acre lots, and you need to extend a water line, and you're... You may have to put sewer, you don't know what you're doing, then you're going to have to come in and plat to make sure you're extending the road, making sure the utilities are available in that area. So this gives you some of those exemptions on when you do have to plat versus when you don't have to. Currently, they were kind of in two different sections of the code, so we're going to move them into one section, make sure it's clear when they apply in the city limits versus the ETJ, if there's any difference. And then we had some new exemptions that we've come across that we would like to add in. So a property that's changed its boundaries because Techstock came along and took the front 20 feet, they didn't change the property boundaries, it was changed because the right-of-way was acquired from them, so that wouldn't affect your legal lot standing, your lot of records standing. A parcel for a utility company infrastructure, so a lot of times if Bluebonnet or LCR, or someone needs a substation, sometimes they may need it in an area that's not on a street, and they just... And they'll get an access drive, but they need the land still transferred, actually sold to them. So that, under our current regulations, would require it actually to be platted. In this case, if they're a public utility company, we're proposing an exemption, because sometimes it's a lift station or a substation that doesn't, you know, it's going to be kind of maybe in the county, not near a street. Emergency onsite repair permits, so there are some properties in the ETJ that have been illegally subdivided over time. There's already a house there, they already have a septic system, and the septic system has failed. I think the county's put it in their rules, but we want to make sure it's in ours, too, that they have the ability to go pull their permits with the county without having to plat first, to make sure those issues are taken care of. And then property that was subdivided prior to 1981, which is our date that we adopted our subdivision regulations, if they had an approved access easement and a way to maintain a... What we like to call kind of a private street, so they... We've had several, if you look on the maps, they may have 10 properties down that are all sharing a driveway, and they actually have an HOA kind of set up to maintain it. It's officially, you know, dedicated in the records that they can all use this private road. If they meet certain qualifications, they're exempt from having to plat. So those are what we're looking at with this code update. Any questions on that? So moving on to then proposed code amendments for the ETJ, we tried to keep it simple and scaled down to the intents of the B-3 Code on what we're looking at, on making sure we're achieving orderly development, we're looking at connectivity, we're looking at those things that are important, and still providing flexibility to developers in the ETJ. So one of the things I didn't show the map on, but we've seen it before, with the adoption of the B-3 Code, we extended in our statutory ETJ the street grid. So we put that 720 grid all throughout the ETJ, so people will come in and will be like, oh, you've got to have a street right here. Well, sometimes there's weird topography in that area, or the existing streets are already kind of turned at a 45-degree angle. So what we're proposing to do is to take... To remove that 720 grid in the ETJ and instead replace it with street grids and lot standards that'll apply in that area, so you're not kind of stuck in that more rigid system. So the first one we're... Requirement is lot dimensions and access. So we're requiring a minimum lot frontage of 60 feet unless within a block of 2,880 feet or less perimeter that they can... Then they can drop their lot frontage down to 30 feet. So what that's saying is, so if you have someone that wants to subdivide off what we like to call flag lots, so they'll have two pieces... They'll have one big piece of property, and they do one lot that has 200 feet of road frontage, and the other lot has 20 feet of road frontage. So we're saying that that 20 feet needs to be at least 60 feet, because that's at least the width of a county road. So in the future, when that back, you know, acreage decides to subdivide even further, they have enough width to get a county road on that 60 feet and provide connectivity. So what we've seen is someone divides off on 20 feet, and then they want to just subdivide off in the future three more lots further back, and they can't, because they don't have road access. So we're trying to plan ahead for that. But if they're in an organized subdivision that's already laying out, kind of like the Rivercrest that you just saw, they can drop their lots down to 30 feet of width. The other requirement is that they have direct street frontage for each lot, so that means you have to actually have part of your lot touching the road. You can't have it all taking access off of a private driveway. So for the street design and arrangement, this is where we're getting into trying to provide some more flexibility while still getting that connectivity requirement with the 720 block grid. So block lengths would still be 720 feet with a maximum perimeter of 2,880 foot, and that can be modified by warrant. So if you want a longer and... But narrower block, so not a perfect square, you want a rectangle, and you could do that through a warrant process. And then the street design, in our code, we have 11 different cross-sections adopted. We're saying you can use any of those 11 cross-sections in our code, or if you want to use the county standard, we can approve that if it's appropriate for that area with a warrant. So the county's... The county's road standard is very close to our rural cross-section. We have a rural cross-section. The main difference is we actually require a ribbon curb along the edge. It's a concrete curb, it's flat, and it keeps the road from unraveling. So sometimes you'll see that asphalt over time starts to kind of unravel off, the concrete keeps it from unraveling, so... Street arrangements and connections. So this one requires you to extend the street fully through your subdivision. You can't stop it midway, or if someone has already stubbed a road up to you, you need to continue it on through your subdivision. What you'll see is people will say, oh, I have road frontage, it's the end of this road. And you're like, well, no, you need to continue it on to your property so the next person then can connect on to it. That's where we kind of... That's where we get our orderly development part, and that all streets must be provided prior to the final phase of a plat. So in my experience, you'll have a developer that they wait until that, like, very last phase to try to put the road in, so they need to make sure that all those road connections are made prior to the final section of the plat being approved. One of... One of, so internally, you can still meet that 720 block grid, but you may not provide connections. So in the city limits, we have a lot more ability to make sure those connections are being made, especially with our thoroughfare plan. What this does is provide that you have to have a certain number of connections as your subdivision gets bigger. So for a minimum of five lots, you need at least two connections, which could be the street going past those five lots and your two connections are on either end. So the street just can't dead end into your five lots is what we're going for there. Once you get to 80 lots, you need to have three ways in and out of the subdivision and it scales up. So and you max out at, if you have over 500 lots in a subdivision, you need at least nine ways in and out. So that, one of your examples you see that violates that is the Colony through their original agreement. They only had two, three ways in and out for the full subdivision. That was going to be 4,300 homes. And that's a lot of homes for three ways in and out. So this would, in the future, they would have to have at least nine ways in and out.
I would think also just for fire safety.
Yes, mm-hmm, yeah. So that's, that's where this, this requirement comes from. Especially in this fire and flooding. We have both, so we like to, we want to make sure, plus it provides better response times for emergency services. If, when you have to go all the way around a development to get somewhere rather than through, that really adds up on our fire and EMS response times. Parkland dedications, this is making sure that there are, there's open space requirements even in the ETJ. So what we're proposing is one acre of parkland per 100 dwelling units or 5% of the total plotted area, whichever is greater. We will allow a fee and lieu option in some circumstances. So if it's under 100 units, they won't get to one acre. Or if there's the land, you know, that they're proposing to dedicate may not, may not be appropriate for a park or we don't need one in that area. And the park can be 100% private or an HOA park that's maintained privately in the county.
How is the fee determined?
We have an adopted fee. It's a per dwelling unit, so it would be per lot. I believe it's $500 per lot in the current ordinance. Which at this point is probably not what land actually costs, but. We also specify that heritage tree protection does apply in the ETJ as well as the city limits. State law does allow us to protect heritage trees in the ETJ. In our code, protected trees are 13 inches up to 24 inches. And a heritage tree is 24 inches and greater. And the DRC has the ability to permit the removal of trees. And if the trees are diseased or dying, those don't, those don't count against your removal totals, so. But the goal of this is that, so a developer doesn't clear cut a lot just because it's easier to not have to take those into account and to make sure that they're not targeting their street on the row of really big trees. So in my opinion, we're not as strict as a lot of cities. We have 13 different trees that we designate as protected or heritage trees, which are your oaks, your elms, your lob lolly pines. We don't protect mesquite or hackberries or some of those other trees, weeping willows, those aren't protected. So it's your hardwood trees that take a long time to grow. And that, that's, and so that's, we're trying to keep it simple. We're trying to keep it to the things that are important. And then as always, when we're reviewing a subdivision, the stormwater drainage manual applies. That's already adopted in the stormwater drainage manual. Then anytime you're doing a subdivision, that the stormwater drainage manual applies. So we'll be reviewing that as well. If they don't meet an exemption and they have to come in to plat, then that's part of our review process. Any questions or anything that we're not looking at that we?
Well, no, I would just like to say, I think the staff's be, is to be amended for looking at ways and understanding that not everything is going to fit perfectly. And we need to take into consideration those that don't. Especially in the ETJ where it's wide open and in the city too. Not everything fits hand in glove. And I commend you for working on that.
And so our goal with this is to get this to legal for their review and then to get it back either at the end of May for a public hearing or at the very latest, the end of June. So we can get that to y'all and then to City Council for adoption.
Any question on, you mentioned that in the ETJ, the zoning standards don't apply necessarily. So as far as street, street edge and things like that, that's not something we're looking at.
Nope, we can, so one of the things we can specify is a build to line and a PUE, those kind of standards. But we can't, we don't review your building permit. So once, so once the subdivision is done in the ETJ and their next step is getting their, what we call the building permit, it's a development permit from the county and the county can only look at specific requirements. Cities and counties in Texas are different. Cities can do, home rule cities can do what they make laws for unless the state tells them they can't do it. Counties are the opposite, the state tells them what they can do. So they have specific things they can do and if it's not in that list, they can't do them. So reviewing building permits is not something the county can do. So they can review drainage, floodplain, driveway permits, addressing, those kind of things. But the actual construction of the building itself, they don't review.
Those on this plat, they stipulated two feet above base flood elevation. Is that just a FEMA rule or is that?
That's the City of Bastrop floodplain and county rule, yes, we both. Because FEMA, I believe, recommends a minimum of one foot, we recommend two. In our flood prevention ordinance.
Thank you. Item five, updates. Picture of the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Yes, so we have been requested to get pictures of all of our boards and commissions for the, I want to say Boards and Commissions banquet.
Later in the year.
Later in the year, but we need, but we're supposed to get the pictures done before June.
Before June?
Yes, so it's, so we can take it tonight. We actually have a fair, a fair number of y'all here. Or we can wait till the next meeting.
Let's do it the next meeting, so give Matt and Karen fair notice and Scott. But we need you here.
And I think we have another, I think the mayor's supposed to be appointing another member to replace Cheryl, since this is her last meeting. She's going on to greater things.
Yeah, on the bigger and better, well, bigger anyway.
On that, on that topic, after the swearing in of the new council members, is that when they will appoint the liaisons to the different commissions?
Yes, yeah, they were holding off on that until they.
Had a full, a full council.
Yes, so we should have a new council liaison to appointed.
We're skipping 5A for the time being. 5B, update on recent City Council actions regarding Planning Department items.
So the last thing that came from Planning and Zoning that was forwarded was the sign code amendments. And those were approved on Tuesday night on the second reading. They made a slight tweak just that the banner sign that is changed out over the years, or over the years, over, within the year period can't exceed the original permitted size to make sure that it meets the requirements of the, but otherwise it's stayed largely the same text.
Thank you. 5C, Building and Planning Department Monthly Projects Volume Report.
Yes, so you'll see, we actually, we picked up again on single family permits. We did 26 for the month of March. And that's because the Bastrop Grove Residential Subdivision just finished up their first section on public improvements. And now they've gone vertical on starting the houses in that section. So they have 319 lots out there. So this is the first 26 out of the 319.
Better late than never.
All right, so we're keeping, keeping busy in there and planning has stayed about the same. We did have an uptick in signed permits based on all of the signed discussions we've been having lately, so. Any questions on that?
Thank you. 5D, reminder of Impact Fee Advisory Committee meeting, May 26.
Yes, so we have an Impact Fee Advisory Committee. The Impact Fee Advisory Committee is the Planning and Zoning Commission plus one member from the extraterritorial jurisdiction, which is Don Cana. So we will, at 6 o'clock, we'll have the Impact Fee Advisory Committee first and then have the regular Planning and Zoning Commission at 6:30, so.
And that's, meeting is necessitated because?
We've updated our study, I say we, our finance department's updated the Impact Fee Study and has some recommendations, changes to the impact fees. And those impact fees come from the actual debt and expense of expanding the system. So we're building the new wastewater treatment plant, we're looking at building a new water treatment plant. And the idea is that, you know, they're very expensive projects and, you know, some of us here may only, you know, experience them for the next five years. So you're pushing that debt to the people who will use the system over that 20-year lifespan. So you're, you push those to the impact fees. So that debt, that debt gets spread out over the people who will actually use that system over the time that it's used.
They can share with us.
We share, we share with the future, future people who will be using the system.
All right.
And they'll probably explain, explain that way better than I did.
So that's probably won't last very long.
It shouldn't last very long. We do, I think we've been doing about every other year on that.
Yeah, it's been a while. 5E, individual requests from Planning and Zoning Commissioners that particular items be listed on future agendas. Anything from anybody? Fair for none.
Let me just, may I ask a question? Because Cheryl is, so last meeting, when I brought up a future item for the sign, so that's noted now, so I don't have to bring that up every time, right?
Right.
Thank you.
Yes.
It's on our list.
Loaded loud and clear. Before we do adjourn and move to item six, I want to thank Cheryl for her years of service. Her, she always comes prepared, she asks insightful questions. And we'll miss you. And we're going to be proud of you sitting up there, up here, and asking the same insightful, knowledgeable questions, so. Go get them, girl. We're going to miss you.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I wanted to say, tonight is my last night and I'm so thankful that I started this journey on planning and zoning. I feel like I've learned a lot and I still have a lot to learn. But this was a great place for me to begin, to start this process and take this knowledge with me as I serve the community, as the City Council Member for Place One. So I think that you guys, I think it's an exciting time for anybody to be sitting on this committee. We have a lot going on in Bastrop, a lot of development, a lot of movement, a lot of people coming in. And so if you are interested in doing, you know, doing more in your community on a commission or a committee, I think that this would be a great one, I think. And we have the best team up here making the right decisions for the community. So I appreciate all of you and I'll be coming. You guys are like my family now. So you may see me pop in if I'm not the liaison for this commission because I just think that this is so interesting and it's a big part of Bastrop that we all need to be aware of and understand. So thank you.
All right, we all, we'll move on now to item six.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second. We're out of here, thank you.